All right, it's called order the Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, October 11th, 2021 with a roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. Acting City Manager Martini.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, and now we'll have our invocation, pastor.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Sparks. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, Mr. Adams, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. First up is Mark Markle, followed by John Hesse. I gotta have you come down here, Mark. Okay. We gotta see your smiling face.
Mark has asked that I read this newspaper clipping for him.
I don't think that mic's turned on.
Showing on, am I, can you hear me?
Okay, use your mom voice.
A type of man was in critical condition Friday at Long Island University Medical Center for the undertaking for treatment of head injury after a car crash Thursday, Thursday of the morning. Mark Markle, 24, was thrown from a 1977 Datsun as it overturned on Live Oak Canyon Road at the Eastbound Interstate 10 off-ramp at 4:30 PM, said California Highway Patrol Officer Amber Drysdale. Markle's brother, Matthew, 20, of Cherry Valley, was driving south on Live Oak Canyon Road when he lost control of the car, struck a curb, and skidded into the off-ramp, the officer said. The vehicle was rolled several times and landed on top of Mark Markle. The cause of the accident is being investigated.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mark Mark Markle. I'm concerned about a resident. As she read back, it was, it was on Columbus Day back in 89, that we were celebrating Columbus Day, and this happened. And I just, I don't have all the answers or anything. I don't talk well, I just wanted to be an example, an example, and, and I want people to see what happened, what can happen when you get in a car with a drunk driver. It, it totally messed up my life. I'm here today because God lived that life, and I'm just returning the favor. I have a mission. This is it, I'm just returning the favor for God. And I, I just don't want anyone else to get in a car with, with a drunk driver or drink and drive. It, it's a, just look what happened to me, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, John Hesse, followed by Darla Lee. John, come up to the podium here. You can sit in a chair, right there in front of you. And there should, the light should be green, yep.
Green.
You're ready to go.
Good to go, green light. The BS stops.
Uh, good afternoon, my name is John Hesse, and I'm going to speak for the public comments. Probably doesn't have that much to do with the city of Sparks, but I'm getting warmed up tomorrow for Washoe County, uh, at their, uh, meeting, which is at 10 o'clock, and it's concerns of Wild Creek Golf Course. You folks have been working hard on it on your end and what you can do. Uh, I know that, that Ed and Chris and, and I know Chet's been some of our meetings and I, we really appreciate that, but, uh, the high school going in on the back nine, I guess that's, I mean, it's, it's a given, but the rest of it, we want to make sure that that ground is going to be, uh, used for public works and not residential homes. Uh, some of this stuff is beyond our means, I know that. It comes down from the federal government and we're just pawns in the, in the whole show sometime, but, uh, thank you very much for, for the support that you've given us. It really does mean a lot, and, uh, to take up your time with my blathering on, who I, I do appreciate that. So, anyway, just, uh, thank you, and, uh, I'll, I'll be at the meeting tomorrow. Uh, I'm sure this speech will make all of you want to attend. So, anyway, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, John. All right, Darla Lee.
Darla Lee, for the record, um, I'm not as gracious as John. I have a few, uh, a few bones to pick, I guess, because for at least two years now, we, John, others that have been concerned about Wild Creek and its future have tried very hard to get some kind of guarantee, some kind of, of wording that would be solid as regards to what's happening at, at Wild Creek. And now fortunately, uh, there's the first T, and that is going, uh, to go through, I'm sure, tomorrow. And my only concern is that yet again, the wording is not in the motion, as I've explained to Ms. Vanderwell, and, uh, and then she had emailed me this morning that the language will be in the grant bargain and sale deal as a restriction upon revision. That's to her understanding. So, well, that's fine, but we haven't seen it. We haven't seen the words, we still have no guarantee that if that first T ever reneges on their policies and it reversed to the county, that the golf course is going to be open space or a golf course and not as I've seen in your agenda today, having, uh, open space that suddenly becomes multifamily dwellings. And that seems to be the trend, and I don't understand, if you have four agenda items just today on rezoning, then why hasn't Wild Creek been rezoned? And why haven't we had a letter of memorandum as we were promised time and time again to have some kind of, of a guarantee for that property? And so if it goes through tomorrow, I would like to have the, the language, I would like to have, uh, maybe tomorrow, that has to have the motion before this sale deal is available, but the, the proposed language is not in the motion, and it wasn't in the motion last month, and I, and I conferred with several about that, and it's not in the motion for tomorrow. So I'm wondering why, and why can't somebody just kind of be forthright and honest about this? That's my concern. So as John said, we plan to be there tomorrow, and no doubt it will be, I think it will be passed, but I certainly would like to have some, some, uh, where that this wording is going to be available to us to actually see. I'm just that skeptical, so. How much time do I have?
You're done.
I'm done, unfortunately. Thank you.
Hey, John, will, will you, uh, will you leave your number for John Martini, and he can explain to you what we understand this is going to happen?
Somebody actually understands it, yeah, I think we'll have to.
Thank you. Okay, any, uh, anyone else in the public wishing to make a public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Uh, approval of the agenda, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, I'd like to approve the agenda with, uh, nine point, item 9.6 being heard after item 11.4.
Okay, looking for a second, Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. All right, 9.6 goes after what, 11.4? Make my note here. Okay. Moving on to the minutes. Any additions, corrections, or, uh, changes to the minutes? Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for September 27th, 2021.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And most carries unanimously, thank you. Announcements, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest, boards and commissions, vacancy announcements, arts and culture advisory committee, Mr. Martini.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lawson. We, uh, have two vacancies on our Sparks Art and Culture Advisory Committee, each for two-year terms, ending November 30th, 2023. One vacancy is for a representative of the visual arts, and one vacancy is for a representative of the performing arts. Applications will be accepted by the city until October 28th, 2021, at 5:00 PM. Uh, persons interested in serving on these committees should complete the community service application available from the city of, uh, city of Sparks Clerk's Office. You may also apply online at the city's website at www dot city of sparks, all one word, dot U S slash get involved, then clicking on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation, careers and constructions month. Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, careers and construction month is observed annually and is designated to increase public awareness and appreciation of construction craft professionals and the entire construction workforce, and whereas during October, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in the construction industry in Nevada and across the country. And whereas, the construction industry is Nevada's fourth-largest sector in total employment with more than 92,000 jobs, and whereas, the construction industry in the Silver State has the highest projected number of openings from 2020 to 2022, and is the second-largest industry with weekly wages over $1,000 per week. And whereas, Nevada continues to provide opportunities for secondary and post-secondary students, as well as individuals looking for entry into this job market with training opportunities, and whereas, organizations across the state work to highlight opportunities for training and information on the construction industry, which will lead to long-term rewarding careers in construction, and whereas, the city of Sparks is pleased to honor the construction industry and all construction stra, construction trades as a critical role they play in economic development of Nevada. Therefore, now therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim the month of October as careers and construction month.
Thank you, was there anyone here to accept that?
I don't think so, hopefully they're out constructing.
That's a good thing, we, we need that for sure. Okay, moving on to 7.3 presentation, soulful seeds and the garden mini-farm at Our Place. I hear lots of good stuff about this, and I can't wait to see your presentation.
Mayor Lawson, members of the council, and, uh, Mr. Martini, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. My wife was going to be here, de shaefer witten, however, work kind of got in, got in the way, so I'm the designated person for today. I'd like to start off by apologizing because a few months ago, I was invited, I was on the agenda, and frankly, I was ready to come, but I had the wrong day. So, uh, I'm glad you allowed us to come by and, and come back and present our story to you. Uh, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, having gotten the designation in the fall of 2018. For the past, since 2017, we've been growing vegetables and, uh, at a facility provided by St. Mary's near the, uh, the, uh, Rock down on, uh, Sixth Street, and, uh, we've been delivering food to food pantries here locally. One of them is the Sparks Food Pantry, where, uh, fresh vegetables are willingly received and delivered to homebound seniors on a weekly basis. They simply like the freshness, and we like the opportunity. I don't need to go through these numbers with you, you are fully aware of the, uh, need for healthy food in our community and around, and around the country. And we can't solve the whole problem, and we certainly can't do it by ourselves, but what we can do, working with the community, as you will see a little bit later, we can address the issue and give people skills to make their lives better. As I indicated, we are 501(c)(3), we're supported by volunteers, donors, businesses, government agencies as well, uh, because this is a community effort, it's only, only going to be, uh, solved at that, or addressed rather, that way. Here are more numbers for you, and as you can see, uh, it's not very good. Actually, I heard a number recently, within the last week, that the poverty in, or the food insecure population is even higher than these numbers in, in our state. Uh, all we have to do is look at the homelessness, they just seem, that, that it's a growing issue, and, uh, likewise, the number of people in food lines. When I, uh, would deliver food to the Sparks Food Pantry at St. Paul's Church, um, the line would be all the way out to the street, and so often, people are, it's not necessarily the homeless people only who don't have, uh, uh, proper nutrition, but people who are working simply can't afford it as well. This is fundamental to who we are. We have three, four rather core pillars, and I'll go through these briefly. Uh, community gardens, neighborhood gardens, we want to teach people and at the same time, give them skills that they can, uh, at least partially support their, their existence. So, community garden, as an example, is a collaboration with individuals in the community, and you'll see some of that in a moment. We formed, or at least my wife formed, a food insecurity coalition to really bring parties together, to work together, so we're not duplicating each other, uh, others', uh, work, and really supporting each other. Uh, and, uh, so that's been going successfully for the, for the past several months. We've been meeting via Zoom, as many other organizations have. Neighborhood gardens is, uh, really building a garden that's close to the population. The example that stands out to me constantly is in Detroit, where they take, uh, uh, land that has been vacant for what, for a long time, made available to organizations to create gardens so people can come and get fresh vegetables. I think that's possible here as well. The Our Place Campus is, is an example of that. That's 2.6 acres, and I'm probably going to jump back and forth ahead of myself. We, our goal is to grow more food than that audience will be able to handle. So our current position is we will grow food primarily for individuals on the Our Place Campus, excess will be delivered to food pantries as it is now, and, uh, who knows what the, uh, uh, the future of that, uh, the process of getting excess food to others. We don't want it wasted, we don't charge people for anything, we have never charged any people for anything, we've been supported by, by volunteers, by donations, and, uh, so, and we hope to continue to do that. We did go through the administrative process for Sparks, uh, back, uh, in the spring, I believe, and, uh, wanted to make sure that we were complying with your requirements, uh, to have a garden site there. What we will not be doing is selling on that property, uh, just so you are aware. If you look at the top illustration, that's the way it looked up, up to about one month ago, and the bottom illustration is our view, or our vision of what it can look like in, in the future. If you go by there today, you will see thousands of, of cubic yards of fill material that has been delivered by Tomwa. Over the last, uh, three weekends, they have supplied that material because the, the property needs to be raised two to three feet according to Loomis Engineering, who did pro bono work, work for us. What we are trying to do right now is find an organization who will come in and actually grade it. We're in conversations with SNC, uh, who, uh, I mean, the person we were talking to is on vacation, he actually toured the site and gave us some ideas on how to, how to accomplish what we want, what we want to do. These are men who are participating in the, uh, crossroads program for Washoe County. We have a similar relationship with the women as well, who are in a separate crossroads program. So those individuals who are motivated and who are trying to improve their life, uh, are willing to come and actually harvest vegetables that has been subsequently delivered, uh, to others. Now, our growing season is over, just harvest, just cleaned up the garden yesterday with a couple of volunteers. This is probably the second to the last harvest, and it was delivered to people who in fact need it. So I, and I can't say enough about, uh, this group, I mean, we all have issues in our lives, and they have issues as well, and they're working on trying to fix them. Here's an opportunity for them to do that in, on an ongoing basis. So we will work with, uh, uh, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself, let me just slow down here. We also have an education pillar, uh, it's kind of, I use, I use the, uh, example of a horse. Uh, you can read a book on riding a horse all you want, but until you get on a horse, you really don't know what it's like. So people can read about how to grow vegetables, uh, but here is an example, we were working here with the international community a couple of summers ago, literally showing them how to plant garlic, and you can do a similar approach with so many other vegetables. And of course, the issue of growing vegetables in this climate, some think it can't be done, but it is being done and done quite successfully. If you have any questions at any time, please chime in, I know you have a tight schedule, as we all do. Something we have considered is workforce development. Uh, one of the products that is, uh, easily put together is spices. So we have discussed putting together a spice company, allowing residents of the Our Place Campus to learn how to, uh, do, how to do that successfully. And there's so many issues associated with that, logistically, marketing, expense control, all that kind of stuff. They're not going to get to be millionaires doing stuff like this, but they definitely will, uh, get some skills. One of the things that's on our agenda also is to help those who are inclined to obtain their food handler certificate. I'm sure you know that in this whole metropolitan area, getting people to support the restaurant industry is just not an easy thing to do. So at least, again, it'll give, the, the process of going through that certification shows a little bit of discipline, and, uh, also being able to work and learn what actually goes, what actually is involved in, uh, working in a restaurant. Here are some of our partners, and as you can see, it's a diverse group of people throughout the community, different professions, who are really supporting us, some financially, some, uh, uh, through, uh, pro bono support as, as an example. Uh, one of them is, is, um, Anna Barino Tahoe. They, they, for example, and I'll show you this, uh, I'll just pass this around.
I think I've highlighted the area there.
They have been providing free advertising for us, and that's a very good thing to have. And, uh, so there's an ad in there, uh, with the young lady that you will see in this, uh, uh, package, who has a lot of difficult things in her life, and working with the, her instructor at, at her school, uh, she just has a positive attitude, and that's, that's the positive attitude we want to have with, with a lot of, of individuals. This gives you an opportunity of the, uh, to, to look at our board. It's quite diverse, various, uh, professions within the community, and, uh, it, it, we don't, we're not, we wouldn't get to where we need to be without this, uh, without this board. How much is this going to cost? Well, it's not free, and, uh, we, uh, have projected the cost here in a summary format. There are other things out there like the, uh, the site prep, much of that cost is already taken care of with, uh, Tomwa giving us their support, and, uh, we are working at getting pro bono services from a contractor to come out and level all of that, all of that material. But I'm sure you know contractors are really busy under normal circumstances at this time of the year, and right now, it's no, it's no exception. So here is an example of some of the pro bono services that we have received so far, I'm not going to go through it in detail, some of it is, uh, already committed to us, some of it, we are in discussion about it, but we want to give people the opportunity to participate in this, in this project, and so far, we haven't received any objection to what this project is intended to accomplish. How are we going to fund ourselves? Well, wherever we can get funding from CARES programs, the new, uh, funds available, made available from the federal government, we will do campaigns, uh, we will seek volunteer time, as well as in-kind donations and pro bono, which, uh, I have discussed. We are in social media a lot, and, uh, it's been pretty, pretty, uh, successful. We were recently selected by Channel 8 to be their, uh, one of their pillar partners for this upcoming year, so that gives us a lot of, a lot of exposure as well. Where have we been? Well, we talked to Washoe County in 2000, I think it was 2018, but I have 2019 here. We, uh, well, actually, it is before this, but we gave them a proposal in 2019 and completed the contract discussion in 2000, in 2020. Because of COVID, everything was pushed back, so that contract has been extended for two years. We went through the administrative approval process for the city of Sparks, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we have received approval from the state of Nevada, you know that- You know that the state owns the land, Washoe County is leasing it, Sparks, it's in your, in your jurisdiction. So we've gone through those three agencies, and it's been a learning experience for me. Fundraising is where our conversation is, is right now. Where do we go next? I talked about the landfill. So, once the, the area is graded, we're working with the county to put a fence around that property, similar to the black fence that you see around the Our Place Campus right now. Once we, once we do that, we are going to build garden beds. Perhaps if you've driven by there, you see a lot of lumber in that parking lot. Well, frankly, we can't use it all, and, and per the fire department, we have to use fire resistant material, which we have access to. So what we can't use, we will give to other nonprofits in the area. One example, not really in the area, but a lot of the people participating, the, the fire that destroyed the Boy Scouts camp up just across the border, we are giving lumber to them, and there is a, an organization in the North Valleys where we're giving lumber to them as well. And we have donated already to the Women's Center for Domestic Violence. So, the number, the lumber is not going to get wasted. You can see, I'm not going to read all of this, what we have to do to make this happen. Our ultimate goal is to be productive, fully productive, in the spring. In the garden up by St. Mary's, I just put in another 250 garlic cloves yesterday, and we are saving a one bed for leafy greens, which we will do in the spring, because that goes over very well. So, Dee Schaefer and myself really appreciate this opportunity, as I, as I indicated, and our vision is, is different, but I think it's an example of success that the community will like. So this is the young lady that's in the illustration that you just saw. Here's our contact information. We're on Facebook and Twitter and, no, not Twitter, haven't figured that one out yet, but Instagram. And so, and you, you, you will have our phone number as well. Backup information I'm not going to go through, this gives you the, an indication of where we currently estimate our future costs to be. It will be, it's, it, it's the summary that was shown to you a couple of slides earlier. Staffing, not very much staffing is anticipated, but nonprofits don't run by themselves. So, we need to figure out how to obtain funding to do that as well. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Questions from the council, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for what you guys are doing. This is, this is an awesome project. I am wondering, have you reached out to the Nevada Department of Agriculture? Their, their offices are actually located right next to this property, right, right by Our Place.
We have, actually, but not with the idea of getting funds for this project. We are connected with them. We, we, we obtain a license from them on an annual basis, and they are very supportive of that. What we do look for is an opportunity to request grant money that might be available through the Department of Agriculture, and we haven't seen many of those yet.
And I would recommend that you continue to pursue that, because I know that is one of the areas that they've been trying to help, those community garden type projects. And plus, I would encourage you to request to speak to the board. You may be excited to see the, the response that you could get from our local ranchers and, and farmers that hopefully can assist you with some of your needs.
Which board are you talking about?
The Nevada Board of Agriculture.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you.
Are you still on that board?
I'm no longer on the board, but.
Talking to a guy with insider information.
But I, I could help you out if you want to reach out.
And please send the contact information, and I will follow up.
Okay, thank you.
He knows a guy, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Anyone else?
Well, thank you so much for your time.
You.
I really appreciate that, and we will work to make this something you'll be proud of.
Thank you very much, and I, I understand your trials and tribulations through all the different government entities you had to go through, and we apologize for that, but you got there, that's the main thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Item nine, general business. Consideration, discussion, and possible, oh, I'm skipping ahead of myself again. Consent items, anyone wishing to take consent item out of order? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwill.
I move to approve consent items eight point one through eight point four as submitted.
Mr. Rabbit.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll move on to nine point one. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the mayor's appointment to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Mark Harris, Eric Juarez, Yasmin Lozano, Kelly Lucetti, Megan Mager, Megan Minzer, and Barbara Suber. And the mayor got a recommendation to take Megan Minzer. So, Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Megan Minzer to the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission for a partial term ending June 30th, 2022.
Mr. Rabbit.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Nine point two, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of resolution number 3391, establishing the City of Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. Ms. Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and members of the city council. For the record, I'm Allison McCormick, your Assistant City Manager for Management Services, and I am very happy to be here today, seeking your approval of resolution 3391, which will establish the city's Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board. It has been a long road to get to this point. Back in July of 2020, city council directed the city manager to take steps to establish a diversity commission. Staff has attended trainings, received advice from consultants, and gathered information on best practices from other jurisdictions in the diversity, equity, and inclusion space. After doing some of that initial work, staff came to believe that diversity is not necessarily the end goal here, rather diversity is an essential means to reaching the goals of equity and inclusion for all. Based on that view, in June of 2021, city council directed the city manager to draft a resolution to establish the Equity and Inclusion Advisory, Advisory Board, a name that reflects those goals. And I am pleased to bring that resolution before you today. If city council approves the resolution, the board will consist of seven members, one appointed by each council member, and two appointed by the mayor. Initial members will be appointed to a mix of three-year and four-year terms, so that the board can get off on a strong start. And then after those initial terms, members would be appointed to two-year terms with a two-term limit, so that new voices can be heard over time. Board members must be residents of the City of Sparks and are preferred, but not required to be residents of the ward of their appointing council member. HR is working to develop three to four questions to go on the board member application, to ensure that members are interested in equity and inclusion concepts, and to ensure that the board represents a mix of diverse backgrounds, including race or ethnicity, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, abilities, socioeconomic circumstances, and other factors. This resolution does not require interviews for members, but staff is happy to facilitate interviews for any council members or Mayor Lawson, if you so choose. Once established, the board will provide advice and recommendations to the city council and city staff on steps that the city can take to foster a more equitable and inclusive organization and community for all. I am proud to recommend that city council approve this resolution, so that we can continue this critical work. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, question from the council. And you've got a question?
Comment.
Yes, please.
Can't find my button here, sorry. Allison, thank you so much for the work that you and HR have done, and you're right, it was a long road. We began this discussion last year ago, July, in response to everything going on in our community and in our country, and really feeling the need to make sure that the City of Sparks is, is receiving input from everyone across our community. And, you know, the equity and inclusion really crosses a lot of, a lot of different, in a lot of different places. It's not, it is race, it is, you know, all of the things that you mentioned, but it's not purely race and ethnicity, it includes abilities, it includes, you know, just so many more things, age, includes age. You know, people forget about that, whether it's from our youngest residents, you know, whether they're, you know, college student to our oldest individuals, and socioeconomic also. So really, I look forward to encouraging people who want to be at the table and helping us, basically, we want their input, issues that they may have or may not have. Kind of, I see them as a sounding board for us, too, when we have things going on in the city, that we'd have a group with that type of diversity to bounce things off of and get a perspective that we might not have currently. And so, I'm, I'm really, I'm excited that we're finally going to be opening this up and encourage people to apply for the board, and I thank you and HR for the work that you guys have done, and done it right. You've gone out and, and, and we've gotten the training, and we've, we've spent the time to make sure that we do this and we do it right, so thank you.
Mr. Dare.
Yes, I want to say thank you for doing this. I know our staff's been working on this, and you guys have. One of the key words I put in here is just that we, the end result is that we value each person in our community, and I just say that, I, I know there's a lot of conversation around all of this all the time, and sometimes, if we're not careful, it comes across, we just checked all the marks. That's not what we're trying to do, and to our community out there who's watching this, all our million of people on Facebook right now, I want you to know that our goal is that, and we really want this to be a place of value, and my hope is that this is a safe place to have these kind of conversations, that people can bring things, and something we can talk about, and we can get ahead of things before they're ever an issue. I would ask, so, somebody out there listening right now, or someone in the room who says, I want to be a part of that, what do they do to do that? Do they reach out to us? Do they wait for announcements? What happens next?
There will be an announcement at the next city council meeting, and the process for applying will be similar to applying for other boards and commissions, just like Mr. Martini mentioned in the earlier item.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Rabbit.
Is there an, an age requirement to be on that?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Looking for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
I move to approve resolution number 3391, establishing the City of Sparks Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board, and I want to say thank you very much for all the work you've done on this, great job.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consideration, nine point three, consideration, discussion, possible approval of agreement AC 5813 between Washoe County through Washoe County Sheriff's Office and the City of Sparks through the Sparks Police Department to pay Washoe County Sheriff's Office for 48 hours of dispatching services each week, for approximately $7,000 a week, or $182,000 for six months, or $364,000 for one year. Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of council. For the record, I'm Chris Crawford with your police chief. Before you today is a new memorandum of understanding with Washoe County Sheriff's Office for Dispatch Services. As you are aware, I presented a similar MOU to you previously, to have Washoe County Sheriff's Office dispatch work at our dispatch center to cover shift shortages due to staffing issues. While that worked in the short term, we have had more staffing issues that have led us to a need of a long-term solution, which is what is being presented before you today. Since I was last before you, we have had another dispatch retire and three with long-term absences due to personal matters. We currently have 10 fully trained dispatchers who can be counted to cover 24 hours, seven days a week. We should have 23 dispatchers at this point. The only way to accomplish this currently would be to have no days off and a substantial amount of overtime on those 10 people. The solution we are presenting in the form of this MOU is to transfer all dispatch services, that's all phone calls, police and fire dispatching, to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office two days per week for up to one year. We will staff dispatch five days a week while allowing one dispatcher per shift above our minimum staffing, to assure that folks have time off and a plan for unexpected circumstances. This schedule has also built in time to train the three dispatchers we currently have in training, the new dispatchers, and we have built in training for the six new hires we are anticipating in November, one of which started today and one in two weeks. We will reassess approximately every three months to determine if we can take over all or part of the services that we will transfer to Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Our training takes six months, so I expect this agreement to last till at least May of 2022. The police department will utilize monies from vacancy savings within the police department budget to pay for the sheriff's office services. We did test this out this past weekend and had no issues that were presented to me as of this morning. That is what I have before you, and I'm here for questions.
Question from the council. Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for bringing, you know, a creative solution to a really huge issue for us of not, not having dispatch, both for the safety and security of our residents and businesses, but for your staff and the dispatchers that are still there. So I guess my question would be, and so you're looking, you're anticipating, even with some new hires and the training it takes to add to our complement of 10, to increase that, hopefully back up to the 20, to 23, you're anticipating it'll probably be a six-month period, and if we had those numbers before, are we flexible enough in this agreement to, you said every three months, we can analyze and see in three months if, you know, all of a sudden we were good, we could take back some of that? I, I mean, is there enough flexibility in this agreement to allow us to, to take back dispatching services if we can and when we can? Is that allowed in, in, in the agreement with Washoe County?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. I believe it'll take us at least six months till we have that option, but we'll assess in three months, but at any point, we can take part or all of the services back.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Chief, I was just wondering, long-term, what do you see as some of the solutions to, to resolve this? I mean, having sat with dispatch on a shift, I understand the, the amount of stress that they go through. What do you think is, is the best way moving forward?
Some of the things that we've done is, we've created videos for people that are applying, so they truly see what a dispatcher does, that it's not just answering a phone call and waiting 10 minutes for the next one, that it's all occurring at that time, so they know what they're getting into. We've also required that if they go into the background process, that they do what we call a sit-along, so they get to see what that is. So, what we were seeing early on was people that it sounded like a good job, but they didn't really invest the time to realize what it was, and so we're seeing that success. We, for two years, did not see a person successfully pass training. We have one that will pass in two weeks, and two more that are being very successful, as well as the, I think it's six right now that we have in backgrounds, which is something we have not had in three years. So I think we're doing the right thing to answer your question.
Okay, any other questions from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Dare.
Yes. I move to approve the agreement AC 5813 between Washoe County through Washoe County Sheriff's Office and City of Sparks through Sparks Police Department to pay WCSO for 48 hours of dispatching services each week, for approximately $7,000 a week, $182,000 for six months, or $364,000 for one year. Thank you, I think this is a good, a great approach, appreciate it.
Mr. Rabbit.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, any further discussion from the council? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Nine point four. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval of resolution 3393, replacing resolution 3383 of the Sparks Police Advisory Committee revising the appointment qualifications for a high school or college student to also include an at-large community member who may or may not be a resident or business owner within the City of Sparks. Chief.
Thanks, sir. I think I'm still your police chief, Chris Crawford, for the record, so. Mayor Lawson, members of council, wow. All right, see how this goes. Very clearly, before you today is an amendment to the Sparks Police Advisory Committee Resolution, which. which we just passed in the last month or so. As you're aware, we did not receive any applicants for the high school or college student application portion that I was hoping for, and we're just amending this so that it can includes an, include an at-large community member who may or may not be a resident or business owner in the City of Sparks. So that would fit into the high school, college student, or at-large member of the community. So just want to bring that back and memorialize that, and I'm here for questions, I'll keep it short for you.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, chief. I just have a really quick question, and it could be wordsmithing or anything like that. When we're saying a high school, college student, or an at-large member who may or may not be a resident of the City of Sparks, do we have, like, where they can be from? Like, is it going to be just Washoe County, or can it be Northern Nevada, or something like that? I mean, I realize they won't be in the City of Sparks, but just in case anybody thought they would want to come in and travel to represent from another place.
Yeah, it is, it is not memorialized in that as far as just in Washoe County, so that would be the preference is the Washoe County high school student. We have plenty of applicants that would fit that from Washoe County, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, so my understanding, we did not, since we didn't get the college student, college or high school student, we're substituting with an at-large. If the next time around, will we, will it always be either/or? I mean, if we got a college student, would we lose the at-large spot? Or is this adding the at-large spot to the advisory board? And should we come up with a student at a later time, we can add them to the board?
It would be an either/or, so it would be the high school student, a college student, or this member at large, with the preference being the high school or college student in the future, if we can get some to join us.
Okay, and, and I appreciate getting younger voices here, too, but I do also appreciate the at-large position of someone, because we do so many things regionally, you know, we're working regionally with our police department, with our community, everything we do is in this big bowl that we all live in, and I think that at-large spot that we maybe, I certainly didn't think of before, is an opportunity for us to have people that are in Washoe County but maybe don't live or work in Sparks, another voice to add to the discussion. So I appreciate the clarification, though, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
I move to approve resolution number 3393, replacing resolution number 3383 of the Sparks Police Advisory Committee revising an appointment qualifications for a high school or college student to also include an at-large community member who may or may not be a resident or business owner in the City of Sparks.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Can, nine point five, consideration discussion of possible approval of a new three-year Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement AC 5811 for personal computer client access, virtual desktop and server product licenses in the amount of $241,510.98 per year, for a three-year total of $724,532.94, and authorize IT manager to finalize the purchase through CDWBG.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. Good afternoon as well to members of the council. I am Rich Brown, your IT manager, for the record. And as the title suggests, this is a new three-year agreement with Microsoft. And as a quick reminder, this agreement covers a wide swath of technology services we use in the city, covering everything from desktops, which includes Windows 10 and now Windows 11, productivity apps like Outlook, Word, Excel, and then on the backend, it covers all of our server-based technologies, so Windows Server, database servers, email servers, and file servers, to name just a few. And this will cover us from October 1st of this year through September of 2024. This, this agreement constitutes a, an increase of $59,186.50, which is just a little under 33%, and that increase is comprised of two different pieces. The first is just a standard fee increase from Microsoft. In the years past, that's averaged between 5% to 8% per agreement. This year was a little bit higher, presumably because of the pandemic, but I, I'm not exactly familiar with Microsoft's strategy there for pricing, but that's what it is. And the second part of the increase is, are you, are increase in usage of licenses? So more employees means more desktops, which means more applications. And then on the backend as well, we increased the number of licenses we employ to do, to serve those employees through additional services on the server side. And that's essentially where the increase comes from for this three-year agreement. And going into this, since we didn't expect quite as big of an increase as we got, it is not completely budgeted within the IT operating fund, so we do have a strategy to correct that, and that's going to be through anticipated savings in either the IT operating fund and the general fund, or the ITP, IT CIP fund. And between those two things, we should be able to cover it without any issue. And last but not least, this will also, this agreement will dovetail nicely into the cloud efforts I had mentioned in the, in the years past, and that should shrink our licensing needs for the enterprise side, and those will convert into the cloud. And I will have more for you on that in the coming CIP development for next fiscal year. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion, Mr. Rabbit.
I move to approve the three-year Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement AC-5811 for personal computer client access, virtual desktop, and server product licenses in the amount of $241,510.98 per year, for a three-year total of $724,532.94, and authorize IT manager to finalize the purchase through CDWBG.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Most carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have no public hearing or action items related to, unrelated to planning zoning. Item 11, planning zoning, public hearings and action items. 11.1, public hearing discussion of possible adoption of resolution 3392 to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from open space to multifamily residential MF14 for approximately 23 acres of a larger 118.6 acre parcel located at 2351 Gino Martini Parkway Sparks, Nevada, between Isabella Drive and Antonella Court. Another long, lengthy one.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of the city council. I'm Dany Ray with the Planning Commission, presenting this certification of a comprehensive plan amendment request to you today. The subject site shown here in red is 23-acre portion of the larger 118.6 acre former DeAndrea, former DeAndrea Golf Course site, which is outlined in blue. And for your orientation, to the west is Vista Boulevard, and to the north is North DeAndrea Parkway. On the left side of this slide, the existing comp plan land use designation is OS, and it's shown here as the same color as the remainder of the former golf course area. On the right side of the slide, the proposed land use designation for this 23-acre portion is shown as multifamily residential or MF14. The owner of the property has requested this comprehensive plan amendment, or CPA going forward, to change the land use designation from open space to multifamily residential or MF14, in part in anticipation of an upcoming DeAndrea Handbook Amendment. Approval of this comprehensive plan amendment would bring the comprehensive plan into conformance with the DeAndrea Plan Development Handbook designated, designated, pardon me, to 12.5 acre Monticello Village, while also expanding the MF14 land use designation to an additional 10.5 acres, making up this entire area here, allowing for development through a future amendment to that handbook. The former DeAndrea Golf Course was originally approved as part of the handbook in 1998 with a land use designation of open space. In 2009, the city approved the latest amendment to the DeAndrea Plan Development, changing a 12 and a half acre portion of that golf course area to low-medium density residential or LMDR, which allowed up to 14 dwelling units per acre for a 72-unit family, single-family residential project known as Monticello. The tentative map for that project has since expired, and the owner of the property is considering a 230 residential unit development in its place. The proposed MF14 comprehensive plan land use designation and existing handbook LMDR land use designation permit detached family, attached single families such as townhomes and condominiums, duplexes and multifamily uses, with a maximum density also of up to 14 dwelling units per acre, conforming to the handbook's land use designation. The trip generation letter indicates there will be no increase in traffic estimates because the handbook already accounts for full buildout of 2,230 residential units in the DeAndrea Plan Development. This amendment accounts for the full buildout of 2,230 residential units as well. There is no change in the total number of units. The applicant provided the required fiscal impact analysis, which demonstrates an overall positive fiscal impact of approximately $1.6 million over the 20-year analysis period. While the analysis shows the revenue deficit to the road fund of approximately $1.6 million as well, over that same 20-year analysis period, the analysis estimates a revenue surplus to the city's, uh, city's general fund of approximately $3.1 million over that same time period, leaving the balance of the 1.6 positive balance. The 23-acre project area is located within the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Utility Corridor, and is shown here, outlined in this blue circle. There are easements in place that prevent development under these power lines. The potential development in the project area is anticipated to be open space and recreational opportunities in that portion of the site. Up to this point, I've discussed the content of the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, and fortunately for all of us, there are only four required findings, so it should go fairly quickly. Pursuant to the regional plan, the subject site has a regional plan Tier 2 land use designation is located within the Truckee Meadows Service Area. Properties in the Tier 2 land use designation are characterized by suburban development and residential density is limited to a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre. To comply with finding CP1, the proposed MF14 comprehensive plan land use designation allows for a density range from 10 to less than 14 dwelling units per acre, and complies with the regional plan policy RF3, because this range is below the maximum allowed density of the 30 dwelling units per acre for Tier 2 designated land. For finding CP2, the requested CPA complies with policies MG4 and MG11, because emergency services are available to the site, sewer and stormwater facilities are available in proximity to the site. Development of the subject site is projected to be fiscally positive for the city, with fiscal impact analysis demonstrating the $1.6 million surplus over that 20-year analysis period. Subject site exists within DeAndrea and is surrounded completely, with completed residential development, supporting goal MT6. Also, assuming the construction of the remaining 230 dwelling units permitted by the handbook on this subject site, the trip generation letter indicates there'll be no increase in traffic volumes, because the handbook already accounts for that 2,230 residential units in the maximum buildout of the plan development. This represents 21 fewer weekday AM peak hour trips and 35 fewer weekday PM peak hour trips than in the previous study for the entire buildout development, when considering potential multifamily units at the site, where the previous study had considered single family. Any future handbook amendment will require new traffic impact analysis at that time, accounting for the full 2,230 residential unit buildout permitted in the handbook. Surrounding uses are discussed in finding CP3. For finding CP3, changing the comprehensive plan land use designation from OS to MF14 is compatible with the surrounding land use designations as properties located southwest and east of the subject site are designated low-density residential, LDR, and open space, OS. Properties located north of the subject site are designated multifamily residential, MF24, LDR, and OS. The MF14 comprehensive land use designation supports high-density, single-family, and low-density, multifamily uses. This designation is compatible adjacent to residences located in the LDR and MF24 land use categories, and acts as a buffer between the higher-density MF24 to the north of the project and the relatively lower-density LDR residential uses in the remaining surrounding area. Public Notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June 16th, 2021, and the Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as public hearings for this matter. A neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant on June 7th of 2021, exhibit 7. The certificate of verification for neighborhood meeting is in your packets. Seventy-three people signed the register as attending the meeting, and the amendment was presented to those in attendance. Concerns expressed by the attendees were traffic impacts, water availability, the development of apartments, and impacts to quality of life. As previously stated, the Planning Commission approved the comp plan amendment on July 1st of this year and has recommended certification to the city council. Comprehensive plan amendment is required to be reviewed for conformance to the regional plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency prior to certification by the city council. On August 26th of this year, the Regional Planning Commission held a public hearing and reviewed the requested comprehensive plan amendment. The commission determined that the comprehensive plan amendment is in conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, and that RPC action letter is also located in your packets. Your decision today is the third and the final decision for this amendment. Staff does recommend approval of this certification and has provided a recommendation for you should the city council choose to approve. This concludes my presentation, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the council? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to public comment. Any from, anyone from the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and I'm looking for a motion. Oh, Mr. Dare.
Hello, I said a quick question. On, on our water, have we, what, what are some of the answers we have there? Are we, do we, are we able, able to put our reclaimed water up there, or what, what are we having for water for the golf area, and then when it comes to the water, just need it up there?
That's a very good question. Do you want the engineer?
And I want to say that I, I'm very excited about the idea of, of these homes going in, I think it's a great idea, and I, I'm glad that we are able to take this area and do, that we've driven by it a bit, and I've had quite a few constituents call me excited about what's happening there.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, in response to Councilman Dare. Harvey Whitmore, for the record, with the Whitmore Group, I'm one of the managers of the applicant. We are presently using effluent pursuant to an agreement with the City of Sparks. We plan on using effluent on a long-term basis pursuant to agreements which we will reach with the city. We're in the process of acquiring water rights, which we will be dedicating to the city pursuant to a future agreement. Under the existing agreement, we're paying a price, which is a very, it's a very fair deal, but quite frankly, still doesn't work for the long-term benefit of the golf course. We're going to need to come back to the council with a proposed modification of that agreement, one which requires us to dedicate water rights in exchange for the use of the effluent. And so we'll be bringing that back. We've had significant, good discussions with acting manager Martini, multiple occasions. occasions, and again, uh, we are, we will work out a payment, uh, plan with respect to the amount which is presently in arrears while we're waiting to get the, uh, facility up and running and start to generate some revenue. So, again, that's my commitment, but again, we will be using effluent on the golf course. And one of the things that we'd like to do, and I was really interested in this Soulful Seeds presentation, there may be some of land availability in the northern part of that that could potentially be allocated, a couple acres or something that would really fit in with some community services.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, but I do want to thank the applicant for, um, proactively, uh, engaging the HOA, um, all the homeowners and everyone up there. Just like any development, it's not one that you get a hundred percent support on, but, um, overall, there's, there's been a good response, and we all love seeing things turn green up there. Okay, I move to, uh, I move to approve based on finding CP1 through CP4 as set forth in the staff report to adopt resolution number three-three-nine-two certifying a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change a land use designation from open space to multifamily residential MF-14 for approximately twenty-three acres of a larger one-hundred-and-eighteen-point-six acre parcel located at two-thirty, uh, twenty-three-fifty-one Geno Martini Parkway, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote, and motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item eleven-point-two. Public hearing discussion of possible improvements of amendments to the final plan hand development for Kylie Ranch North Phase Five. That's as far as I'm reading today. Otherwise, we'll be here for another twenty minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This is a request for the approval of an amendment to the Final Plan Development Handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Five. So for a little bit of context where we are here, the Kylie Ranch North site is outlined in blue. This is an eight-hundred-and-seventy-four acre plan development. And for a little bit more context, this is Pyramid Way running along the western side. This is where Sparks Boulevard turns into Highland Ranch Parkway as it crosses Pyramid. Just northeast of Kylie Ranch North is the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, just north of Vista Boulevard, and north of the site is the Lazy Five Park and the Stone Brook Plan Development. And of course, just south of Kylie Ranch North is Kylie Ranch South. So as you recall from some previous items that I've presented to you in the, in recent months, the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development is somewhat unique in that it was established as a tentative handbook, which is then adopted in phases, each of those phases requiring a final plan development handbook. And so, the final plan development handbook for the Phase Five area, which is, of course, outlined in red here in your exhibit, was approved by the city council in two thousand and nine. So, a little bit more, uh, context here, this is the land use map as approved in the tentative handbook, which was most recently amended last month. The purple parcels, of course, the, the outlined in black is the Phase Five area. The purple parcels here, these are six villages that are designated as Business Park in this request, and just south of those are two villages designated as Medium High Residential. So this is, again, the way that the tentative handbook, uh, appears, the land use, uh, categories. And so, the final plan development handbook for Phase Five needs to look this way as well, and so as of, um, today, that final handbook does not look this way, so we need to make some changes in order to, um, accomplish that. And so, the two things that we need to do in this request in order to achieve that would be to consolidate the Office Business Park into one category and to add in the two residential villages here. So, starting with the first piece, uh, prior to today, the Phase Five area was pretty evenly divided between Office Business Park and Business Park. And so, over time, it became pretty apparent that those two land use categories were a little redundant, and so it was consolidated in the 2016 tentative handbook amendment to consolidate those into one category called Business Park. And on to the second piece, the reason why we're adding these two yellow villages in, prior to 2016, the two school sites which are just south of Phase Five, this is Sky Ranch Middle School, and this is the Bow Hatch Elementary School, just for your reference. Prior to those sites being established at the 2016 update, uh, there was going to be a school up here in the north and a school down here in the south, and so the school district obviously over time decided that it would be more beneficial to them to establish a larger complex for two schools as opposed to two separate sites for two separate schools. And so, in establishing the school sites here, those two residential pieces in the yellow were pushed up into Phase Five. So again, these were approved in the tentative handbook, and now what we're doing today is trying to bring the Phase Five handbook into conformance to, to reflect these changes as well. So the Phase Five area in total is a hundred-and-fifteen acres. Twenty-two of those acres are Medium High Residential, and those are the two yellow villages here at the bottom of the site. That residential category allows for a density of twelve to seventeen-point-nine dwelling units per acre. The little bit of green that you can see throughout the site running up the middle here, as well as, uh, on the northern boundary of it, is about eleven acres worth of open space, and the remainder of these six Business Park villages are just over eighty-two acres in total. So again, a main point worth making here is that the request, again, is to update land uses in Phase Five in order to conform with what's been approved previously in the tentative handbook. So in order to modify an approved final plan, there are ten findings that have to be made on the record here today. So, finding one asks you to consider whether the modifications are consistent with the goals and policies as well as the overall land use plan established as part of the Comprehensive Plan. So these changes in this request are intended to bring Phase Five into conformance with the tentative handbook, which was evaluated for its consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, and so with that in mind, these modifications do conform with the Comprehensive Plan. Finding two asks you to consider whether the changes remain consistent with surrounding land uses. Business Park was established at this particular site to serve as sort of a buffer between the residential development that was taking place in the east of Kylie Ranch North and the Pyramid Corridor, Corridor on the west, as well as a buffer between the commercial villages that were south of Business Park and the Regional Park, which is just to the north. So with that in mind, the land use categories are consistent with those surrounding uses as they were intended in the tentative handbook. Finding three asks you to consider whether the changes are fiscally positive to the city. Again, because these changes were implemented in the tentative handbook, uh, the fiscal impacts were studied at that time, those assumptions were, uh, accepted by city staff as well as adopted by the city council, uh, in terms of, uh, remaining fiscally positive to the city over time, and so these, uh, this request will not affect that. Finding four asks you to consider whether the changes are in the mutual interest of owners and residents within the plan development. The proposed amendments actually bring the final handbook again into conformance with the tentative handbook, and so these changes will work toward providing current owners and the rights and privileges that are associated with those land uses as established in the tentative handbook, starting in 2016. Finding five asks you to consider whether the amendments will impair the owners or residents' reliance on the previously approved provisions of the plan. So there's one existing business operating within the Phase Five area, that's the Boleem Mo facility, which is, uh, the northern part of Kylie Ranch North, if you're familiar with that area. Uh, so in 2016, when those land use categories were condensed, uh, to, to make Business Park and Office Business Park one category, uh, no standards were changed there, the, the permitted uses that were allowed in Office Business Park will remain as part of the allowed uses in Business Park, so nothing changes there. And in addition, any landowner in the residential villages on the southern part of Phase Five, um, will now be able to develop, uh, along those lines, whereas previous, uh, to this request, uh, no residential development was ultimately permitted because the handbook was not in conformance at that time. So today, we're trying to clean up that, uh, that issue. Finding six asks you to consider whether the changes would adversely affect the public interest. Again, we're updating the language of the Business Park land use area, adding in residential villages already adopted in the tentative handbook, no changes are anticipated to have an adverse effect on the public interest. Finding seven asks you to consider whether the changes are consistent with the development and preservation of the entire planned unit development. Proposed amendment is specifically intended to comply with those updates to the tentative handbook and therefore intended to support the development and preservation of the entire plan development as adopted. Finding eight asks you to consider whether the changes would affect the enjoyment of the surrounding lands. These changes will not impact the relationship between the Phase Five site and any surrounding lands, uh, therefore have no material impact on the enjoyment of those surrounding lands. Finding nine asks you to consider whether the changes are intended to confer private benefit to any individual. The changes to the handbook would be applied to all property owners within the Phase Five area, not intended to provide benefit to any individual in particular. Finding ten asks you to consider that public notice has been given and public hearings held, so prior to the September second Planning Commission hearing for this item, all owners within the Phase Five area, as well as anyone owning property within seven-hundred-and-fifty feet, were notified by mail, and notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal as well on August eighteenth. Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval. The applicant's representative is here today as well, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Questions from the council? All right, don't see any? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up to the public for comment at this point. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and I'm looking for, uh, an, a motion. Mr. Dare?
Yes. I move based on findings A through J as set forth in the staff report to approve the amendments to the final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Five, changing handbook land uses to conform to changes to the Kylie Ranch North Tentative Plan Development Handbook approved in 2019 for a site approximately a hundred-and-fifteen acres in size, generally located east of Pyramid Way and south of the Lazy Five Regional Park, Sparks, Nevada, in the NUD New Urban District, Kylie Ranch North Zoning District.
Ms. Bybee?
I second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And... Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Eleven-point-three. Uh, public hearing discussion of possible adoption of resolution number three-three-nine-zero to certify a Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the land use designation from Mixed Use District Civic to Mixed Use District Mixed Residential on a site two-point-nine acres in a size located eleven-forty-six Prater Way in Sparks, Nevada.
Ian? Thank you, Mayor Lawson, uh, members of the city council, Ian Crittenen, your Development Services Manager. So this presentation is gonna cover three requests. Uh, we have a request, uh, all these are associated with the Urban Lofts Town Home request, we have a request for a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, a request for rezoning, and a request for a tentative map. While, uh, all these will be in one presentation, they all will require separate action. Um, the, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the rezoning will both require public hearings, whereas the tentative map request won't. Um, also, the tentative map request will need to be heard third, just because of how that order works, so. So, the Urban Loft site is bound here in this map, um, uh, in red, uh, it is comprised of two parcels that total two-point-three-six acres in size. Um, as you can see, the site is located, um, east of Robert Mitchell Elementary School. Um, also, you know, we've got Twelfth Street here on the east side, as well as, uh, Prater Way on the south, and then G Street on the north. The site is currently developed, um, with two former church buildings, as well as a single-family residence on the, the one smaller site. There's one smaller parcel, I should say. Church-related operations ceased on this site in 2020, and the buildings are now vacant. Um, the site is located in the City of Sparks, uh, Mixed Use District and is adjacent to Prater Way, which is a pri- primary investment corridor, uh, where infill and redevelopment efforts are prioritized to align, uh, investment in transit, bicycle, and pedestrian facilities. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment request is to change the land use, uh, designation on the western parcel from Mixed Use District Civic, or MUD-CV, to MUD-MR, or MUD, uh, Mixed Residential, Mixed Use District Mixed Residential. The eastern parcel, the small residential parcel, already has that designation in the comp plan, um, but the, the church site does not. Uh, meaning this land use, uh, of this parcel to MUD-MR would remove the opportunity for, um, civic and institution, institutional uses instead to allow a range of residential and commercial uses. Uh, the rezoning request applies to both parcels. Uh, this request is to rezone the sites, uh, these two parcels from public facilities to Mixed Use District. The Mixed Use Residential portion of the, of the Mixed Use District allows for a variety of residential and commercial uses, such as duplexes, multifamily buildings, personal services, food or, uh, grocery or food markets, as well as breweries, um, or urban wineries. As the site is adjacent to Prater Way, the Mixed Residential portion of the Mixed Use District does have a minimum, um, residential development, um, requirement that this will have to meet, uh, uh, twenty-four dwelling units per acre. Uh, the concurrently submitted tentative map proposes fifty-seven townhomes on the three-point, two-point-three-six acre site. Um, catch me if I say seventy-five, I've said it a bunch of times, it's, I've practiced it, but it is fifty-seven townhome units. Uh, the gross density of this project is two-point, or twenty-four-point-two dwelling units per acre, which would, complies with the Mixed Residential portion of the Mixed Use District as far as density is concerned. Uh, on this slide, you can see the preliminary landscape plan that illustrates the overall subdivision design. The townhome, uh, buildings along Prater Way and along Twelfth Street, uh, will face out towards those streets. Uh, vehicular access is proposed, uh, to access from, um, G Street with no public access for vehicles from Twelfth or Prater, but there's multiple, multiple, uh, pedestrian access points along Prater, um, Twelfth Street, and G Street. Um, the, each townhome unit will have a two-car garage, um, and, and there are an additional nineteen parking spaces located throughout the, uh, the development along this area here, as well as kind of in the center here, there's some extra parking spaces. The project will provide a minimum of a hundred-and-thirty-one off-street parking spaces, uh, which works out to two-point-three parking spaces per unit, uh, which exceeds the code requirements by a hundred-and-thirty-two percent. On this slide, you can see the rendered elevation for the townhome buildings that would face or front out to Prater Way. Uh, as proposed, the townhomes are three stories tall with a thirty-foot eve height. It becomes important on this slide. Um, because the three-story townhome buildings would be taller than the adjacent one-story homes, um, they're established to the east, uh, the project must use transitional techniques to, um, for residential infill. It does show up, it shows up better actually on that screen than it does here, so I was hoping you could see this. Um, as proposed, the buildings on the east side of the site will step down, you can kind of see that here, to meet the height of the existing homes to the east. In addition to using, uh, roof pitches and overhangs and eaves that are similar to those, the houses to the east, uh, the buildings on the east side of the site, or the, these, these buildings that are the most eastmost on, on this proposed site, will be set back, um, twenty-two feet from that property line, whereas the, the district would actually allow a zero foot setback, they've set back an additional twenty-two feet to give some, some more buffer between them and the, the smaller residential to the, uh, east. All right, so, uh, with that, we've covered kind of the, the general guidelines of, or the general description of the, the, the requests that are in front of, uh, the council today. Um, now we gotta go through the findings that need to be, uh, uh, considered. Um, with three requests, we have a number of findings. We've grouped the Comprehensive Plan findings and the rezoning findings because they cover a lot of similar ground, um, but then we'll have to also cover the twelve tentative map findings. So starting off with conformance and consistency, finding CP1 for the, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment requires the Comprehensive Plan land use change to conform with the land use and intensity, uh, designation in the regional plan. The proposed MUD-MR, uh, designation conforms with the regional plan land use designation of Mixed Use Core because the minimum residential density and minimum floor area ratio exceed the requirements by the, of the, of the regional plan. Finding CP2 requires the, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment implement the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, finding Z1 similarly, similarly also requires the rezoning to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Both the CPA and the rezoning support a broader range of residential and non-residential uses on the site that would encourage infill, walkability, redevelopment in the city's Mixed Use District in support of goal MG4 and policy C7. These requests also comply with policy CF1 because city services- These requests also comply with policy CF1 because city services can be provided at acceptable levels. Existing sewers, stormwater, and roadway facilities have adequate capacity to accommodate 57 townhome units. If a townhome subdivision is not ultimately constructed, so all of these items are approved today, but the tentative map is never actualized, any future proposed use on these sites, regardless of the entitlement that's required, we need to come back and provide traffic, sewer, stormwater, all of those kind of analyses prior to being approved as well. So even if that didn't happen, we're still kind of covered. Now we're going to talk about compatibility. As proposed, the Mixed Use District MR comp plan land use and the Mixed Use District zoning would preclude possible establishment of the certain civic and institutional uses that we discussed, instead leaning towards residential and commercial development. This range of residential and commercial uses is compatible, compatible with surrounding properties to the north, south, and east, as they're already designated Mixed Use District MR. So it's compatible because they're the same. And then Robert Mitchell Elementary School to the west is designated MUD CV and Zone PF, and redesignating and rezoning this site to MUD MR would allow for the same range of uses to the east of Robert Mitchell Elementary School that are already allowed to the north, west, and south of Robert Mitchell Elementary School. So it's already surrounded by this MUD MR. A little bit more is not going to cause it to be non-compatible. Finding CP4 and CZ3 each require public notice. For both requests, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings function as public hearings. The comprehensive plan land use amendment, mail notices for the neighborhood meeting were provided to all property owners within 750 feet of the site, and the neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant's representative on June 8th of this year. Eight people attended that meeting, and those in attendance expressed concern about traffic impacts and availability of on-street parking. Attendees also asked a lot of questions about design of the townhome project associated with the tentative map request. Mail public notice was also provided to all owners within 750 feet of the site for the rezoning request, and notice of both requests was published in the Reno Gazette Journal. One member of the public spoke in the Planning Commission meeting held on July 1st in opposition to this request, or these requests, I should say. So that wraps up the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning findings. Now we're going to cover the tentative map findings, starting off with finding T1, which is conformance with the comprehensive plan. The 57 lots proposed in this tentative map will provide a townhome housing product that enhances housing diversity in Sparks, advancing policy H2. Looking at policy C4, sidewalks on Prater Way and 12th Street will be retained, and a new sidewalk along G Street will be installed in compliance with this policy. The city services on the site can be provided at acceptable levels, as just was discussed during the comprehensive plan and rezoning requests. Findings T2 and T7 are about streets. For conformance with the city's street master plan, project access is provided from G Street, no access from Prater Way or 12th Street is being proposed. Finding T7 focuses on the impacts to street. The roadway network surrounding the subject is established, and the number of travel lanes is not anticipated to change. 57 townhome units is estimated to generate 390 average daily trips with 28 AM and 36 PM peak hour trips. This is relatively low, and that number of trips doesn't necessitate a full traffic impact analysis. The city's transportation manager has, however, evaluated the proposed subdivision and the surrounding roadways and determined that the existing roadway network has adequate capacity to accommodate this level of trips. Moving on to finding T3, agencies that regulate environmental impacts did not provide comments. However, the developer will still need to meet any local, county, or state requirements regarding environmental impacts. Finding T4 focuses on the availability of water to serve the site. The domestic water requirement for this proposal is estimated at 8.09 acre-feet per year, and municipal water service will be provided by the Trucky Meadow Water Authority. Finding T5 looks at the availability of utilities to serve the site, including sewer and stormwater capacity. The applicant estimates that this subdivision will generate a peak of 30,780 gallons of sewage per day. The applicant is required to provide evidence that there is adequate sewer conveyance and plant capacity to serve the project prior to recordation of a final map. City has, however, run these proposed numbers through estimated flows through our sewer model and have determined that sewer capacity is likely to be available. Stormwater and drainage plan for the development will need to be approved prior to recordation of a final map. Finding T6 looks at the availability of schools, transportation, police, and parks. Washington County School District provided comments indicating that this development would generate less than one new student to Robert Mitchell Elementary, Sparks Middle School, and Sparks High School, and that there is sufficient capacity at all of those schools to accommodate that additional generation of students. Sparks Police Department will provide services to the site. They had no expressed concerns about this development. As previously discussed, the existing roadway network is adequate to accommodate trips associated with the subdivision, and the existing parks will continue to serve this site. Finding T8 addresses floodplain slopes and soil. The lots proposed in this tentative map do not fall on the floodplain. The site is also very flat, and so we're not anticipating any trigger of the development standards for slopes and hilltops and ridges here. And then final geotechnical reports are required at the time that final map is approved, they need to be approved. In regard to outside agency responses for finding T9, we received comments from the school district and RTC. Those comments were reviewed and incorporated into the staff's analysis of this development. Finding T10 asks you to consider the availability of fire protection services. Fire protection services will be provided by the Sparks Fire Department, and this site is within the four-minute travel time standard for the fire department. Finding T11 looks to other impacts identified in staff's analysis of the proposal. We identified landscaping area maintenance, architecture of the residences, residential infill standards, surface parking, and some right-of-way issues as potential impacts. Conditions 12 through 16 were crafted to address these impacts and concerns. And then finally, finding T12 requires the public notices given. The posting of the agenda for both the Planning Commission and the City Council satisfies that requirement. The Planning Commission recommends City Council certify the comprehensive plan amendment and approve the rezoning and tentative map requests. Suggested motion for the comprehensive plan amendment is on this slide. Again, motions for comprehensive plan, rezoning, and tentative map will all need to be separate. The comprehensive plan and rezoning are public hearings, but the tentative map is not. So that's the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the council? Okay, on any one of the three? No? All right, we're going to address these one at a time. 11.3 is a public hearing on comprehensive plan amendment. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, and then, so let's just do a motion for that one, to start off. Mr. Abbott?
I move, based on finding CP1 through CP4, as set forth in the staff report, to adopt resolution number 3390 to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation from Mixed Use District-Civic, MUD-CV, to Mixed Use District-Mixed Residential, MUD-MR, on a site 2.19 acres in size located at 1146 Prater Way, Sparks, Nevada.
Ms. VanderWiel?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, move on to 11.4. Any questions from the council on the ordinance rezoning? Seeing none. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott? Oh, wait a second. Public hearing. This is a public hearing item? Almost got away with it. Almost was perfect today. This is public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Mr. Abbott?
I move, based on findings Z1 through Z3, as set forth in the staff report, to adopt bill number 2786 to rezone real property approximately 2.36 acres in size located at 1146 Prater Way and 1115 G Street from PF to MUD.
Mr. Dare?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, then we'll move on to 9.6, the tentative map. Any questions from the council on the tentative map? If not? Mr. Abbott?
Thanks out to Mike for having some of those public meetings that we had via Zoom, and then we had one at Larry D. Johnson as well, as well as some staff that showed up, just to kind of answer some of those questions from the neighborhood. So I just want to give a shout out to you guys.
Ms. Bybee?
I just wanted to, I think this is, comment that this is a great project. It not only meets our goals of infill within the McCarran Loop that we've talked about for years, but also our, you know, the missing middle housing, having townhouses again. So I think every time I get a project come forward, this townhouse condo, I always am excited about that and thank developer for putting forth another missing middle piece in our striving to get housing and affordable housing for, well, housing, missing middle housing for our neighborhoods and great, I mean, it's a beautiful project, so excited to see it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move, based on findings T1 through T12, as set forth in the staff report, to approve the tentative map for a 57 lot townhome subdivision on a site approximately 2.36 acres in size, acres in size, in size, located at 1146 Prater Way and 1115 G Street, Sparks, Nevada, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 16.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And I'm going to second that what a great project. I love the fact, too, that you're going in a neighborhood and you provide 130% of the parking needed. I think that will save a lot of issues in the beginning. Okay, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ian. Good job. Okay, moving on to 12.1, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from the public?
We did not receive any additional public comments.
Okay. 9.6 was the tentative map. We just did it.
Okay, thank you.
Announcement from the mayor, City Council, City Manager, Mr. Rundle, he gets to come down and make a big announcement. Every 10 years, we do a census, and it's that time again where we have to redistrict where the ward lines are.
You've got it, Mr. Mayor. It's that time, based on the information from the 2020 census. Staff is soliciting input from the public. We're going to start tomorrow at Sparks High School. Maybe Councilmember Abbott knows where that is, we're not sure. We're going to use the Sparks High School Theater for the venue to solicit that input from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That'll be tomorrow. As requested by the City Council on Wednesday, October 13th, we're going to use the Alf Sorenson Facility to, again, solicit input on the eastern side of town. And then on October 14th, we will conduct a Zoom webinar, so that anyone who may not be interested in traveling and like to do it from maybe their own home or another venue can tune in and get a presentation from staff on the numbers that we've received from the US Census, and they can review three alternatives, as well as demographic information that we're going to present. They can make comment, potentially give us input on the three alternatives. And that's what we'll be doing this week, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to be busy these next few nights.
You got it.
All right, thank you very much for that. Mr. Abbott?
Sorry.
You didn't have a comment?
No.
I have you on my screen here. Well, you can make a comment. Jim's done. We said, "Thank you, Jim," and...
My apologies. I just want to give a shout out to Marcy Cooper Smith. She's our secretary of our SSEAC, the Sparks Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. She is one of three finalists for the Nevada Senior Citizen of the Year. So we are crossing our fingers for her to win Saturday night and go from there, down in Vegas, so.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
I just want to tell everyone, because if they were going to do this, they should start training now. We have the turkey truck coming up, so Mayor Lawson, this gives you plenty of chance to get ready and Donald, and come on, so...
I don't even know how to make a turkey truck.
But, so you know, this is on Thanksgiving morning, if you're out there, this is something that's an awesome way to earn your turkey, so come out and run your 10K. I know I'm going to call it Amber, because she's done it before. Come on, girl, come on. So anyway, with that said, it should be great.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Acting Manager?
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and my brother has perfect timing to call me. Okay. With that, then we will move on to our favorite subject, adjournment. Yay. Thank you, guys. Thanks, everybody.